We have a mental order and we do have a board. And tonight, we're gonna let the official council member lead us in prayer. Ms. Joe Leed, would you please come forward and lead us in prayer?
All right. Give it up for the Michael.
Also, one last question.
Council members, is it open up this hour? It's about four morning.
Right, that's a pass now. Yeah, now. You got five.
One last one.
Here, work with them. Council members. Can you just pull it down? There you go.
She's just right.
With five X. Lord, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for everybody on this council board. Lord, thank you for the leaders that you chose to lead the city, Lord. Lord, we want to bring part now of what you are. I'll just make a try right at this point, Lord. Jesus sent a favor.
Amen. Yeah. I will not hold back. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Row, column, and right.
President Bowie.
Present.
Councilwoman Bowlin. Councilwoman Yungler.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Right.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Okay, as stated before, we do have a board. The characteristic of my is the merit is recognizing my abilities and limitations. Council members, you have before the February 12 agenda. Are there any corrections, additions? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion that will approve the February 12 agenda.
So, woman's.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilwoman Yungler, and a third by the speaker, Rowe.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin. Councilwoman Yungler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Okay, to the record general, as you now mentioned, council members, you have in front of you ten items for the concern agenda. We're gonna remove item number ten with Councilman Johnson's permission. And we're gonna have nine items concerning the agenda. And also, Councilman Johnson, the information addressed for last night, Councilman Johnson, the information addressed for last night, the youth center in Hilton Award.
Right.
Mr. Attorney Wood, with the contract, needs leading so we can move forward.
Okay.
And also, too, Councilwoman Benjamin, for the recording, Kristen Brish.
You.
Attorney Wood, also, back to the regular day.
Okay, thank you.
So we can move forward with that outside.
Thank you.
Consent item number one, to approve a legal service proposal for Galloway, Galloway, Cane, and Jones on returning for legal advice for service for the mayor and the city council. Consent item number two, to approve Jase Burke's service, pending all requirements for him to be vested on the records rotation on the nine-one-one dispatchers list. Consent item number three, pending approval to approve the family permit for four families to do research documentary given by Martha Sabin in the fourth, twenty nineteen. The locals will be in Salem, Edna, excuse me, Edna, has Bridge, Brown Chapel Church, and Loud Oak Cemetery. That's what they're going to send in things. Consent item number four, to approve for first reading, a line's retail, a particular license for lines, pride, wine, and steer located at three thousand six hundred and forty. Consent item number five, to approve for first reading, a retail beer and table wine, all per person calling from lines, pride, and that. Also, these two liquor licenses, I know they was in compliance, it wasn't in compliance at the time. We definitely need to check the details on these councils and see how they came to apply compliance rather than also, we need to make the fact that it's a transfer to make sure that the owners have paid all the taxes up prior to the transfer. Consent item number six, to approve residuals R one twenty, that's eighteen nineteen, awarded out of town, D U Regional Commission, the contract in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for administrative cost of a drink project. Consent item number seven, to approve residuals R one twenty-nine, that's eighteen nineteen, retracting the Estorman Moss from Civil Rights League. Consent item number eight, to approve residuals R one twenty-two, that's eighteen nineteen, to extend the area of development to Little Farm by S R A from Beach Street to City Marine. And consent item number nine, to approve residuals R one twenty-three, that's eighteen nineteen, that's seventeen and an odd distance on the way ahead of them. Council members, you have the four items to be considered for the concern agenda. At this time, what's the council's? Councilwoman Bowlin.
Mr. President, numbers four and number five, we've received two different, I wanted to pull it for discussion, but maybe you can tell me quickly, what is, I received two, one for a lounge and one for off premises. Two different ones, these are award four. And maybe you can, if you can, I wanna pull it for discussion. I'm in a business.
Ms. Harrison? Consider that four, five, the liquor license.
It's the same address. One is for off premises and one is for a lounge.
Okay, one is for, it's the same structure, but it's a different license that they're requesting. Is it form or captain's call?
Oh, okay, next one.
So, two.
So, like, thanks to each other.
Okay, so I'd like to pull those two for a discussion, Mr. President.
Okay, we have, any other items you'd like to pull for discussion?
We already pulled off, I'd like to ask the question.
Go ahead, sir.
Were they going to commit on item number ten?
No, we just get with Mr. Randolph. Okay, go ahead and move forward.
Okay.
This one, this one going to continue.
Okay.
All right, we have seven items to be considered for the concern agenda. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to all seven items.
So, some of the.
We have a motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilwoman Yungler, Rowe.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin. Councilwoman Yungler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
The concern agenda was approved in that. Council members, you have the four items, January the twenty-second minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to prove the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions? Are there any corrections, additions? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion that we adopted on January the twenty-second minutes.
So, move.
We have a motion by Councilman Johnson, but we have a session. We have a session by Councilwoman LaShaw. Any discussion? Rowe, come forward.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin. Councilwoman Yungler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes were approved in that. At this time, we have Mr. Randolph, Executive Director of Selma House Authority. I think he has some N B A players here. If he would come forward, Mr. Randolph, and recognize the N B A players and pairs.
Hello, council. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to stand before you. These young gentlemen that I have and the pairs and coaches, Selma House Authority is a great asset to the community. And upon my arrival, I felt the need to add more curricular activities and more community involvement. And so, upon my arrival, I created a basketball team. And so, with the two weeks of practice, I entered them into a tournament called the Cirque Noir M L K Cup Tournament. And we actually won four games, won championship.
Wow.
And so.
It's two weeks?
It's two weeks, yeah. So, these guys are tough and I'm proud of them. And I wanted to come for the council and let them be recognized for their hard work and dedication. And I look forward to winning more tournaments and just wanted to come in and show them that we appreciate them and get us a picture with these great distinguished leaders up here with their trophy.
So, Council President, is it possible to put a picture with you with some of the council people?
Okay, well, before I come down, let me say congratulations. You represent Selma in two weeks. We'll get each one of you on the basketball, go and teach you a thing. I'm gonna go old school, though. But, council, I feel that it would be in the best interest if we come out of our box and unleash our own men of a piece of art.
No problem.
Just to, for the recognition.
Yes.
Well, I think that a small token of our appreciation, something small, but I think we need your recognition.
All right.
Councilwoman.
Um, thank you to Coach, Coach Leonard. Thank you, you young men, I know most, I know most all of you from the PALS Center. So, let me say thank you to the Executive Director of the PALS Center as well for helping to groom these young men, probably from when they were itty-bitty. And I'm almost certain you had them from when they were itty-bitty. So, with the hard work that you all put in on the sport, we appreciate you all for not hanging out on the streets at night. You go to the PALS Center. You go to wherever it is you practice now. And this is what you're doing. You have decided to take your extra time and the one you like to do, basketball. Sometimes I like to write poetry. You like to do basketball. So, I wanna thank you all for not hanging out. Because it's, it could be situations out there in the streets and you're not out there in the streets. So, thank you to the coach, Mr. Randolph, the parents, the hardworking parents, and the Executive Director of the PALS Center, Detective Powell. Thank you to all of you all for pouring into our young people because this makes our job easier. We don't have to worry about public safety concerns concerning these young people. So, you make our job easier. Thank you very much.
Where do these nice gentlemen live?
Well, they're part of Public House, so they're all.
Great, great. Any of y'all living where, too? Thank you.
Uh, someone for this. Felix, Felix, Felix.
Good night. Good job.
Yeah, I also want to say, thank you all, especially the coaches and this house. Y'all could be doing anything. Y'all taking time and y'all pressure other day to work with the kids. I was watching a movie the other day about LeBron James, starting from a little boy and coming up to a grown man. Kids, stay focused. This is what can get you where you wanna go in life. I seen a young man, they called Drew in the movie. On your side, they thought the young man couldn't do nothing. He hit six threes right behind each other and they came back and won a game. It was a good movie. I watched it two times. Got a name for it, but it was about LeBron James when there was a Saint Vincent School from him and playing as a good kid. You seen it? It's a good movie, man. So, what I'm saying is, y'all, please, stay focused, keep your eye on the prize. Don't let nobody distract you all. Y'all go a long ways, I promise you. So, for y'all to come together in two weeks and most likely, y'all will end up in the same school. So, stay focused, man. Right now, this is the beginning for you all. So, I mean, if you stay focused, don't get caught with that crowd, that boost. You listen to your parents as well, listen to your coaches. You have a problem, go to someone and talk to them. Don't let the kids on the street talk to you. Talk to the parents, to someone that can lead you in the right direction. You know, so, but this, I saw Mr. Randolph in the south and blow you off for what y'all doing. Because tomorrow is you off. So, right now, you gotta stay focused and doing what you're doing. And I congratulate each and every one of you all.
And once again, I'd like to thank you again, Mr. Randolph, and also the coach, and Detective Powell.
Powell.
Very quiet, no state. I'm careful.
That's how it rolls out. I'm telling you.
I'm very homophobe.
Yes, yes.
And that's because the PALS Center is in Ward Six.
Used to be Ward Four.
The PALS Center is the farm club that these young men stand for. So, Mr. Randolph, it was no wonder you was able to put together in two weeks because the farm club have prepared them for years. So, I just wanna thank you, young men, for being the athletes that you are. We want you to stay in school, get that education, go to church, mind your mom and your dad, and every older person give them the respect that is due.
That's right.
Because they are looking out for you. You all are the ones that's gonna inherit this government. So, we gotta do for you guys now so that you all can take care of us once we get to that golden age.
That's right.
I know some of us up there think we're not gonna get there, but keep living. They'll get there. Keep your heads up, be strong, and be good, young men. Thank you.
Councilwoman LaShaw, I guess it was culture, they didn't more shift than the purpose. Councilwoman.
I wanna thank you, young men, for bringing home the trophy. I wanna thank you guys for being a part of our team, basketball. I see a lot of young men, they love basketball. So, I'm gonna try to keep doing that with your time, your free time, and encourage other young, young guys to be a part of that parent team. And Coach, you have done a good job. And you did it in that lesson those week and they became champions. So, thank you. I thought you were gonna work with us. There's a game at Selma High Coach tonight, too. They're on the road to the final four. The A team is playing tonight at Selma High. They want to be in, I can call the head and. May Councilwoman Shobie call, get to see if they're a little bit.
Y'all getting the phone, we get behind y'all. Councilwoman Shobie, you may have to get on, you short, you may have to get a phone.
I'm ashamed. Don't you scare the hell out of me. Get up in there.
I'm gonna let y'all in, I'm telling y'all, I can't mind you.
This way, one, two, three.
The one that look like a brunt. All right.
All right.
Ms. Randolph. Ms. Randolph.
All right, now, with that, I'll tell the announcements. Any council members, does anyone have an announcement? Or any upcoming events?
Oh, caught me off guard. I have something to attend to. Okay, I have, I have a couple announcements. Our Board of Ward Meeting for Ward Four is February twentieth. Adam, if you could help me put that in the newspaper. It's February, thank you, February twentieth at five thirty P M. The location is being announced. I'm working on Cedar Park, to have it at Cedar Park. February twenty-fifth, we're having our eleventh annual Black History Month Celebration. Five thirty P M. at the Performing Arts Center. All of you are invited to attend. And then, on February twenty-sixth, this is our tenth annual Black Man Kill Symposium. So, this is where the schools buzz in, actual young people from the school. It goes on from nine fifteen A M. to two fifteen P M. You all are welcome to come. If you, if you work with young, young black men, they have an active school program, any of that matter, you're a social worker, and you want CEU. You retired now, you. And you want CEU, you can have those. So, if you're a professional, you're invited to come. It's a symposium focused on the young African-American male. And we are talking about total healing. We know that a lot is going on and it would be common sense that a lot that's going on good happens from African-American males in the city of Selma. And a lot, unfortunately, that goes on bad, happens concerning African-American males because we're about seventy or eighty percent African-American. So, it would make sense that the majority of both comes from this sector. So, what we try to do is to address those matters every year. So, this is the tenth annual. If you work with that target age group, twelve to eighteen, you're also invited to attend. And so, and those are my announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, I will be having a Recreation Department Committee. We have on schedule for this week. But my committee members, Ms. Jackson and Mr. LaShaw weren't able to attend the meeting. So, I'm gonna get with them and reschedule the meeting. We got a lot we need to talk about, a lot of things that we wanna do. So, we did not want to conduct the meeting unless them there. Unless they was there in order for me to get them to help me to approve the agenda that I got that come before them. So, it wouldn't sense to have a meeting if they wasn't there and conducting business, my committee members weren't there to help me to make some tough decisions that we need to make. But anyway, I will have a date before this week out concerning my committee meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Bowlin.
Trying to get together a meeting of the Administrative Committee. Got a lot to, lot to deal with. So, again, I was hoping that Ms. Jackson, Councilman. Randolph will be here today, but I'll get with them and see if we can pin down a date. I know they both have hectic schedules, so it's gonna be a little tough. But we'll pin it down. Hopefully, this week can make an announcement as soon as possible. And also, for the folks of Ward One, we scheduled a Ward One meeting so we can talk about the elephant room, gas tax, and other things going on currently in Ward One. So, I just want to give everybody a heads up on that as well.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas.
Ward Seven, we will be having our council meeting the second week in March. This would be our first meeting. We have a lot on the table to discuss about our community and where we're headed. Also, the month of March is where I travel to Prattville. I represent the beautification of the city of Selma, building with keeping our city clean. We come from different cities and different towns. And we meet and we pick up our supplies, which I give our supplies to anyone that's having a cleanup. And we get to talk about how our city has became, or how it's growing, or how we plan to keep the beautification in our, in our cities and in our communities in Ward. So, I just want people to know that, also, in my, in Ward Seven, I get your calls, I hear your voices, and we are gonna have a public safety meeting, which we have a great concern about the gun violence in my community. And I want people to know, please come out because when you call me as your leader, I call the President Bowie and tell him that we got a problem. I address your issues. And I would like for you to come out to hear what is going to be said at the public, public safety meeting, how we are going to deal with this issue that we're having in our wards.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Shobie.
At our last meeting on twenty-second of January, I wasn't able to present. We was in such a hurry to get out of here. There was no wrap-up. I didn't have an opportunity to thank the students from Auburn University that came to Selma on M L K Day.
These from where? What student?
Auburn University.
Okay.
That great university in the east. They came to Auburn City to do some community services. And one of the things they did was to help me clean up the, where we had four areas that we was, that we had targeted. But because one area was just inundated with garbage, it was just embarrassing for me to have people coming from another city to do some cleanup. But nevertheless, they, they did it and they did it with joy. And that bypass, if you go by today, and I just wanna thank the citizens of Selma because apparently, they got the message. They have stopped dumping garbage. And I can guarantee you, they have picked another spot to do their dumping. And, but nevertheless, I just wanna just thank the Auburn University students for lending me a helping hand to get that area cleaned up because it is interfacing to the state highway, the bypass, which is a main thoroughfare for the community, people to live in that community. So, once again, I wanna thank Auburn University students for coming to Selma and to helping me with that project in Ward Six.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shobie, for that announcement. To the citizens who request, Ms. Jackson, please come forward. Cheer for Selma football.
Good afternoon, you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Jackson.
I'm Stephanie Jackson, and I'm head cheerleader coach for the Selma Rebels. Thomas Baker, he's on Curtis, so he's the head football coach. I'm very organized with stuff, so I wanted to keep everybody on. Your future. Thank you.
Oh, no, so this is today, this is today, this is my session. Okay. Say hello. Okay, so the reason why I'm coming forward today is simply asking for help. As you know, the decrease that we're having at the city Recreation Department, we have two hundred players, ranges from five-year-old to, this year, we're doing eleven and twelves. We're pulling them along this year because we feel like the ones that are eleven and twelve are the people that, are the boys that need us the most. We're also branching to bring cheerleaders here because we feel like the girls are the ones that need us the most as well. As you look, first, I wanna introduce myself. I'm Stephanie Jackson. I am, I graduated from Selma High in two thousand and eight. I've been here all my life. I left here about like two years ago, but I came back. I was the head coach for the Montgomery Cowboys for three years when my daughter started having seizures, we branched back home. And I've been with, which used to be the Selma Hurricanes, this is Selma Rebels this year. And we branched together and I've been with them ever since. I'm very comfortable there, they're a great organization. Now, if you look to the second page, I said that we're all together. These are lists with permission from the parents. This is a list of addresses from some of the players last year. As you see, they're ranging from Ward One to Ward Seven or closer to it. Just letting you know that, you know, we have, we help the whole community. We are all as one, it's not really range, it's Ward, because we all is one shelter. On the next page, it says actually different photos of when we have camp. We have a series camp that starts in May. And it just helps the boys to get, to get in shape. And it also helps with other things, it helps with self-esteem. It helps, like, if they had problems with homework, they have problems at home, we teach discipline, we teach just being a great citizen. And also, for the, the girls will be the first year for them as well. Now, of course, you probably wondering, what is the reason for this actual meeting? The reason for this meeting is we're, we're having a lot of financial difficulties of actually being able to sponsor them. Last year, we sponsored them out of our pocket. Me and also the head coach, Thomas Baker, we got together and we paid pretty much everything. But this year, in case you wanna just pass this around, this is just a detail of uniforms and all that kinda stuff. But we're really just having a hard time because now we have, the workload has doubled this year. And also, we have been cheerleaders. And as the statistics shows, if they can afford free lunch, then they nine times out of ten came for extracurricular activities. But was a child that having extracurricular activities more likely to be in prison, most likely to not become pregnant, most likely to go out to college and just to be just an all-wheel-round citizen? And I know that that's the problem that we're actually having in Selma. A lot of kids really haven't branched out or have the extra parent support to keep them in, you know, keep them in line to say that they can do it and motivate them. So, that's, that's why we're here now, simply asking for help.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes, when you get out, I'm gonna give you my phone number. But we can get together, me, the mirror, and.
But we can get together, me, the mayor, and...
Yeah, I spoke to the mayor.
Okay. Still, what we can do to help you with that. It's probably some personal business as well, you and myself will donate some to what costs. I admire you for what you're doing. This is awesome. We understand that a lot of kids cannot afford what they get, and I'm with you on that. But now, Recreation, do they still supply the shoulder pads?
They supply shoulder pads, but to be honest, they're completely outdated. And the reason why we branched out to get new shoulder pads and new helmets is because by law, you only allowed to actually use that kind of equipment for two years. Some of them is back when I was at school. So that's the problem with liability that comes in.
But now, the Recreation, we never did, we don't support the helmets. Don't the players do their own helmet?
I'm not sure that actually...
I think they do their own helmet, right? But we do the shoulder pads. But still, I do agree, we need updated on the shoulder pads. I think whatever it is to be safe with the kids, we're looking to that. So I would love to meet with you, by me being the chair of the Recreation Department, along with Mrs. Van Dava and the mayor as soon as possible. So what I would do, I would give you my number. And as soon as I can set a date with them, I'd like to meet with you.
Okay, that's fine.
And maybe, maybe it's the committee meeting that we're gonna have, we'll see what we're gonna do on that.
Okay, that's fine.
But I'd like...
Thank you. Even another concern too, I know that even by saying law, the helmets are supposed to be at those games. They're just supposed to be parked at those games in case something happens. And for the last year, I never seen an helmet there.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Ms. Jackson, I was trying to scroll and find out what your ask is. Do you have that listed?
Yeah, I actually have a breakdown on a potential sponsor page.
The page come, look out.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It should come right after meeting.
And you have a total amount on there?
Yeah, it's the total of five thousand.
Okay.
And that actually comes from, we have got invited to different tournaments this year as well to actually bring, the purpose of the tournaments is for us to branch out and for them to come back in. And once they come back in, it actually brings more money to the program and also to the city, even if it's just Prattville. You know, we branch out to, you know, tournaments and bring back in, but you know, that course that's going back in, we have probably in the nearby future. But this is actually to support the actual helmets, shoulder pads, the uniforms, the cheer uniforms, the pom-poms. And most of the stuff, what we're gonna do is we're not gonna allow them to keep it. We're gonna try to use that to a advantage because once you give a child something nine times out of ten, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna keep up with it. So what we're gonna do is let them use it for that year, pull them back so we can have them for the next year.
Okay. And then finally, you know, we have a city program. And I'm asking out of curiosity and because I love the city program, is there a reason to create a private program when there's a public one?
No, this is private, but every team has to sponsor theirselves. So this is just our permission to help sponsor two hundred of those boys.
Okay, and Coach has his hand up and I know he's on crutches.
Yeah.
And he would have been standing with you, I know. Coach is there, another reason?
That's what I'm trying to do with, make somebody, first you travel football team. No kid in Selma travel outside of state or his own state. So travel football, that's fun, that's the bus fee, that's the cost to go to the hotel fee. You travel here to Montgomery, it costs a lot of money. You take in a hundred kids here out of Montgomery, it don't cost a lot of money. That's what the obligation is, traveling to come back. Thank you, big one, it is out.
So travel team.
Travel football team.
Got you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes, I see quite a few of your players come out of Ward Seven. And this is my first time here knowing about this team. And I want to let you know that if there's anything, and I have some ideals that I can be a part of to help. Because every child, every child in the city of Selma here, if they're trying to do something and trying to accomplish something, to keep them involved, I would take deeply a part of this to help you find some money to help with these kids.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I promise you that.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Thank you. Okay. I, like Councilman Johnson, I think that we need to look into this and find out. I'm really excited that they have the meeting. And this is about two hundred children?
Yes, plus cheerleaders.
Low income, and that's great because every little girl wants to be a cheerleader or a bachelorette or something. And, you know, when they get on up, all of them can't do it. So, but I think that, let me just say, and I'm gonna say this to you today, it is probably hard, I probably shouldn't have been here, but this has been on my mind for weeks. Just days ago, we saw the execution of a young man from Selma. And I was real familiar with everything about those cases he was involved with. I had worked with his family involving him. I had worked with, worked his life. I had worked with the victims and their families. I had worked, both of those dead. So that was just a real, real sad. If that child maybe early on had gotten involved in something like this, and I have seen so many, many young men, and there are people in here who have seen children come up that didn't have the availability of these type things. These are things that make a difference in the lives of children who have parents who are absent or parents who are not good influences. So I like to say things like this. But we need to find out a little bit more about the structure and how it works with the city program because we have a lot, you know, there's a lot of different things we need to have an understanding about. But this is great, I applaud y'all for the work you're doing, and I think this is my question.
If I'm not mistaken, the Recreation Department will furnish so up to date the shoulder pads. I'm thinking we're gonna do that. The other thing I'm almost sure we can't do, we cannot purchase the helmet for a lot of reasons. The parents have to furnish their own helmet because the city can't do it for a lot of reasons. But that's why I want to make sure that I have a meeting with them. I'd love to be there. So, but now, you may need to give me your number as well, and that way I can be able to call you when the meeting will begin.
I think one of these, it should be under my name.
Oh, good, I see. Okay, good, good. I will give you a call to make sure that I can let you know a helmet time as well.
All right. And of course, with the... Ms. Jackson?
Councilman Johnson will share his experience with you, Ms. Jackson. So what you guys are doing with this children is very real. I recall my youngest child, who is now a grown man, Mr. Randolph, had demoted and tested us because he was a member of the same football team. They were called the Broncos, eight and ten-year-olds.
Right.
They didn't win a game that year because of lack of, I guess, coaching. On the way back to the stadium to register my son for another season, he said, Dad, I don't want to play for the Broncos. I pulled over to the side, I said, wait a minute, you're not going out here to tell the coach, please, I want this program. I said, whatever team you put you on, you're gonna play.
Right.
He stood there and said, you don't have to play, you're going home. He said, I play. Well, I was playing, and he wasn't a signed to the Broncos. But he didn't know. When he got out there, as fate would have it, he was a sign to the Broncos. But the Broncos had the same players from last year. But the difference was they had two young coaches that put in time with those key business. And they went from not winning a game the year before to becoming the citywide champs. Ask you not to run off this, that's not the God, that's true. So I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing, our children, keep it up. We're gonna move again there.
Thank you, I thank you guys for this opportunity. We've been on strong for two months now. And we have had many, many meetings, no, many no's. But thank you guys just for the fun.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, we got this group one all right.
Okay.
I just want to add, I found the Hurricanes in twenty fifteen, my record is forty-two and two. Take the seven son and run on home too, yo. You still on the game?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mayor, Mayor's report?
I have a question under the mayor's report.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, when we were speaking under the mayor's report, there was something said about a bond, a twenty-five million dollar bond. I asked about it, then I think we all got distracted. Do you know about any information about that?
That would be a question. That'd be a question.
Oh, I can wait, I can wait. I can wait.
All right. To the committee's report now. You know, it's thirty, you have a mention?
Nope. Like I said before, it's gonna schedule a meeting and get, has a lot of stuff on that list, I think. And I think there's something else getting added to it as we speak, so...
Some of your stuff needs to be spread out.
Yeah, it's gonna take a minute, but we'll knock out the things we can knock out, Mr. Headland. And get that sorted away and then we'll move on from there. So again, just be waiting for an announcement on the different pages and emails as I get with the other two councils to find out when they can make the meeting.
Okay. The members of the government, anything?
Yes, Sunday, February seventeenth, from two to four, there's going to be a family fun event at Water Avenue Church in front of Arch-Rite. They'll be painting the mural, and it's a family fun event. There'll be hamburgers and hot dogs. But the white murals made up of the barricades that are there, they're going to be painted. So that will be quite a celebration, so families are invited to that. And remember, it is a family event. No, you know, drinking or cussing or anything like that. So, and also, we have tonight passed the resolution making, creating an art district for Selma in addition to the entertainment district and some of it overlapping. It will not affect adversely at all the entertainment district. It's simply just as giving us an art district that mainly will enhance our ability to draw artists here and for procuring funding for artistic and art projects. And we also have passed, we will be having our first retracing the journey of the historic civil rights trail with a narrated tour narrated by foot soldiers. So you'll be hearing more with that. And I have to get with my cohorts, Councilwoman Benjamin and Councilwoman Thomas on the committee. We'll be doing that hopefully together tomorrow sometime and I'll out details. And then I have to get with the Mad Man ad band, Councilwoman Bulleye. And so that's a lot of excitement about that. And we can look for things to really be happening in Selma. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What's that with the mural?
The mural painting is from two to four on Sunday.
Two to four?
Yes. And also, let me go ahead and say, I wanted to piggyback on what Councilman LaShaw said about the Auburn students. I'm glad that his people have picked up on the fact that you're not supposed to throw things out the window because mine in Ward Two have not. Because the place where my vote was picked up and Councilwoman Bulleye's had picked up, they started throwing it out the window again. I don't think it's really our people, I think it's people visiting around the road. But, but it's, but anyway, the Auburn students did do a great job. They did it cheerfully and they were glad to do it. There just wasn't enough time. And it took a long time. I thought we were gonna get a lot more done. It took a long time to pick that trash up. But we went to shout out to the Cahaba Road Fire Station at lunch. Chief Murphy opened that up, the bottom, and we were able to have our lunch there. And the firemen gave us a held and hearty welcome. They were very nice, the fire department always comes through. And they were just, and they've expressed they wanted to come back. Councilwoman Benjamin met them at the bridge and gave them a very nice crossing the bridge tour. It was a thrill for these Auburn students. And I don't think any of them had crossed the Peters Bridge before.
Eric was there back the first time.
And I got a very nice note from the coordinator and that she was very, they were all, she said they were all very impressed. So that was a very nice added touch. Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin, and for all the council people who were involved in that, making that happen. So that was a great thing to do.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilman Bulleye?
Uh, Councilman Youngblood, I think our problem may be with the good folks that get the garbage up for us that aren't affiliated with the city. The other day I was behind them and it was just nothing more than explosion of garbage flying out the back of that truck, all the way down onto the road. Then they turned and it went down your way. So I think that may be one of our issues, so we may want to get together and make a little phone call and say, hey, could you do something at the top there? You blowing the trash all the way down both roads? Could you pick it up and then you put it right back down as you go back down the road? Kind of painful to watch.
Next, our committee, we have Councilman LaShaw, Public Works, and Senator Ullman.
Yeah, Mr. President, Public Works admitted a meeting on February the eighth. The members present was myself and Councilwoman Youngblood, who's a member of my committee. Councilman Randolph was via teleconference. He was going in and out, but he's part of the meeting and he had an opportunity to hear portions of it. Other members present was Councilman Michael Johnson, Mayor Melton, Chief of Staff, Sir Brian Simmons, and Mr. Sean Van Dava, and clerk, Miss Anna Harrison. Chairman LaShaw called the meeting to Ward after asking Mayor to ask implication. Chairman LaShaw, before I go on, I want to thank Council Youngblood for scripting these ministers. Chairman LaShaw says Selma needed revenue to help repair streets, sidewalks, and our aging infrastructure. He recommended a five cent per gallon tax increase on gasoline to be earmarked expressly for infrastructure and for no other purpose. Chairman LaShaw cited cave-ins on Crescent Hill, on Oak Street as a safety hazard that could happen to other areas with vulnerable pipes that run on the road. Chairman LaShaw cited potholes that we are unable to have repaired in a timely manner, broken sidewalks, and other infrastructural issues that need immediate attention that the city is unable to attend, to attend to in the absence of funding. Mayor Melton stated that the city of Selma was in dire need of additional funding, even with a portion of the city's workforce laid off. The city coffers continue to be deficient to provide funding for needed street, sidewalk, and bike repair. The mayor stated that the five cent gasoline tax would allow the city of Selma to have its own asphalt plant and paving department. That in recent years, we were unable to get asphalt. If we had our own, we would not have to depend on other sources. By having our own plant and department, we would have it where we need it. Mayor Melton stated that we would need to float a bond to fund this plant and department. And I get to that in a minute when I come in. Chairman LaShaw stated that if we bought asphalt, I mean aquafoam, which is a substance other than asphalt, and then we would have it where we are unable to get asphalt. Since we can now get asphalt, we would use it, but we do have, we would have aquafoam should we need it. He further stated that should a bond fail to pass, he would recommend that the gasoline tax be reduced to a three cent per gallon tax. Councilwoman Youngblood did a demonstration on flushable wipes and discussed its effects on the sewage system. She stated that it's shown they do not biodegrade and get caught in the fine looks in sewage pipes. She also stated that people could grease down their drains, things get clogged with aged pipes and cause blocked pipes. At the conclusion of the meeting, the consensus of the committee was that the recommendation be put to the full city council for a vote on the five cent gallon tax to fund the bond to repair our city. And that mean, if you look at your package that the mayor gave us at our last council meeting, the infrastructure needs the cost of repairing every city in the streets of Selma in amounts to millions of dollars. And what he proposed is that the five cent tax would generate anywhere from one point eight million a year, and that money will be set aside and to go out to fund a twenty-five million dollar bond. And that tax will be made to pay annual payments toward that bond payment. That's what the twenty-five million comes from. If you look at your package, each street has a cost, even the smallest street is in a thousand dollars. So it will take a lot of money for us to fix the infrastructure needs of our city. And y'all know that our city is now inundated with potholes. And Venice is known for its panel, Selma's becoming known for its orange barrels. And it's, and, and, and it's shameful and we need to address it and we need to do something about it. Uh, the attorney informed us that, that we just can't float, I mean, passing fast and gasoline tax, it has to be done in orders. And he has prepared two orders that each of you have a copy of, order zero one one dash eighteen nineteen and order zero one two dash eighteen nineteen. One oh one deals with the five cents and one oh two deals with the three cents. And he, and I'm asking the council to put this on first reading and we can discuss this at our next work session about the ins and outs of this, uh, ordinance. It's, it's, uh, it is moving towards increasing the gasoline so that we could deal with the infrastructure needs in our city. While I got the floor, Mr. President, I've asked the attorney to look at my government's ordinance, they passed a law where these shots, people are indiscriminately shooting gunshots. And you know when my colleague often says what goes up must have gone down. And if we don't deal with this like my government has started to deal with, my government, and each of you have a copy of Montgomery's law, and it has some strict penalties on violators. And the attorney's going to research whether or not Selma have a similar law, and if we don't, then he will be drafting a law that would deal with this indiscriminate gunshot that is taken over our city. So that is my report, Mr. President, and asking that the, uh, ordinance zero one oh one dash eighteen nineteen put in form, the motion be put on first reading, unless my motion.
Okay, do we have a socket?
Socket.
We have a motion number twelve of Councilman Johnson, I mean Councilman Shaw, socket by, uh, Councilman Johnson. Uh, Councilman Shaw, would you consider also having a public hearing between, uh, our next council meeting to let the public also bring forth their concerns?
I don't see a problem with that, Mr. President, I think, uh, we've had it before. Uh, I think the public, uh, see the needs of our city. They understand that the city don't have the immediate funds to address the needs. It is a real problem we would have and it's a fact, we don't have the money to deal with it. But once again, I don't see a problem with us having a public hearing and, uh, getting some feedback from the public. But this council got to understand and send the hands to this council regardless of what the sentiment of the people is. This council has to deal with these infrastructure problems. We just got to be real about what we do up here, we just got to go by the horn and deal with it.
Okay.
So I have no problem with that.
Thank you, sir, this is only just the first reading. Uh, like I said, we have two weeks to, uh, do assessment and, uh, see what we need to move forward. This is all for first reading.
Mr. President, and when I, when we set this meeting, even though it's a Public Works, uh, General Services Committee, I, I would rather all my colleagues be there so that they can be a part of the discussion and hear from the public about their concerns and chime in about some of their concerns.
All right, my, just let, uh, Councilman Shaw, that was my schedule for this, I definitely.
Yeah, Mr. Shaw, please.
Councilman Benjamin and Councilman Bulleye.
And you're offering that the, uh, the tax and the bond go hand in hand?
Well.
Or did that get broken?
Uh, the bond will have to be dealt with separately.
Okay.
The tax is, is precisely for the bond.
Okay, gotcha.
And if the bond and if the mayor of the sewers, uh, getting a bond failed, then we will reduce that to the, to three cents rather than the five cents to deal with whatever, uh, needs that we can with that three cents.
All right, Councilman Bulleye?
Governor.
This is all with the first reading, not a voting, all right? Roll call, Mr. President.
President Bulleye?
Yes, for first reading, Governor.
Councilman Bulleye?
abstained.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes, first reading.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes, for first reading, I'm going to discuss that.
Councilman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
First reading.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, all right, motion passed for first reading, anything else, Councilman?
My motion for order zero one oh two dash eighteen nineteen to deal with the three cents. If the, uh, bond that is sold out is not, uh, approved by the funding source, then that, uh, five cents will be reduced to three cents.
Also too, councilwomen, keep in mind, when a, when a bond is floated, it takes the, uh, vote of the people to move forward with, uh. We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Shaw, do we have a socket?
Socket.
Socket, Councilman Johnson, in a follow-up discussion, roll call.
President Bulleye?
Yes, first reading.
Councilman Bulleye?
Abstained.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes, first reading.
Councilman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
First reading.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, all right, motion passed, anything else?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would, I would ask my colleagues, uh, for those, uh, who don't support this initiative, that they would come up with their own ways of addressing the needs of our infrastructure problem. If you're not going to support it, then come forward with some other ways and means because these are problems in our city, these are problems that ain't going to go away, they ain't going to fix themselves. So what are we going to do about our infrastructure problems?
All right, thank you, Councilman Shaw, anything for you from Bassett, if you have anything?
Not at this point, Mr. President.
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Shaw, if you can just make sure that, try to be mindful of those who work. It'd be good, I'd love to be at that meeting so we can hear further discuss this situation.
Uh, I'm retired, so what would be a good time?
Well, anytime after four thirty so I get majority of the work day done, or lunchtime would be good.
Well, uh, does it say five o'clock?
That'd be fine, that'd be fine.
If I can get the mayor to.
And I can be flexible, but as long as it's, you know, we can get in and get out.
I think five would probably be a good time, I don't offer you but for to the working people.
They want to be there.
And I want everybody to be there and even I want the public to come with ways and means to fixing these potholes, these drainage problems we have. Don't come bowing up against it, come with some resolution. We have enough to talk about what our problems are, we need to discuss and have some real means of dealing with our problems.
I agree, and that's one of the things that, uh, this could be used for, we need to fix some of the drainage problems we have. So that's, you know, obviously worth a discussion further as we continue to, to experience those all over throughout the city. So again, I just want to make sure I'm at attendance at that meeting and be there so we can have a discussion.
And I truly believe, you know, I do, I heard about other taxes that has been levered by previous council people that was supposed to earmark, but it was a slush mark. I don't think this council would allow that, all of them, because we don't know what future council people will do. But I can assure you, based on the colleagues that I serve with, we would not get this passed. We would deal with this if all our infrastructure needs is for real, we need to fix it. And we will not allow that five cent gasoline tax if we're successfully getting this 25 million dollar bond to be used in anything other than that.
Thank you, Councilman Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, uh, Public Safety Committee, uh, Public Safety Committee is having a meeting tomorrow at six o'clock, uh, in the dancing center. Uh, we will have U.S. attorney here to talk about the received program that we will be implementing in the city of Selma. So I want to encourage everyone to please come out and if you have any questions, that would be a golden opportunity that, uh, you can ask the U.S. attorney and also our chief of police.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock tomorrow at the dancing center. Uh, far as with the finance committee, we will be having a meeting probably in the next week or so. Uh, councilmen, uh, I don't know if y'all have received this very, about unpaid leave vacation. Uh, we will definitely be, uh, looking at addressing that in the, uh, admin, municipal committee also on next week. Because I know we brought it up before, we're going on it, but I think we need to revisit that.
Is, is that the question you asked yesterday in work session?
Yes.
About, in work session, Mr. President?
Yes.
Is, is an H R person, I don't know who's in H R, is there an H R person that would be present or an H R professional that's going to be present to help answer questions concerning that?
Uh, yes, I would definitely request, um, someone from the H R department to be at the finance committee. Okay, all right, recreation?
Uh, 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 thank you, Mr. President. Now, we didn't have a meeting, but I will recall a meeting, uh, sometimes we go first call it next week once I get with the committee mem, committee members. Uh, also, I do want to inform for those that are concerned that there was a meeting out, but it wasn't. Uh, I met with the mayor when I got the opportunity to meet with the mayor because on the compress situation going on with the downtown at this moment, well, earlier today, they're tearing it down. Uh, as a councilperson, when you see a mayor, you got to get him while you got him. And I work every day like some of you all and what I was able to do to get the mayor, I had a conversation with him to get the, uh, talk about the compress, which we did, uh, discuss that and we moved forward. And also, we met that day down to the compress to get that taken care of. So I want to thank Jerry Wood also, he downed, doing tremendous jobs loading, getting it down, something that should have been down years ago. And also hope and pray that we'll be able to get some, uh, some houses in that area. Uh, because and also water, it was terrible with potholes. Uh, we got a lot of claims that go on right now, uh, through insurance, um, so we got to some. But I know that every time we get a pothole filled, uh, they come right back. So our infrastructure and water is terrible, so, but I just hope and pray we can find some way of getting this taken care of. But anyway, no, that's, that was, there's no report on recreation, but we'll be having a committee meeting, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Public buildings, uh, spiritual arts in downtown, we'd like to say so, Councilwoman Thomas. Also, Councilwoman Thomas, I did email and have your request about meeting with the mayor yourself and your friends about the bomb removal building, just waiting for a reply back, all right?
Uh, we had a, um, building, uh, public building, uh, committee meeting and, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Johnson, uh, it was a mix-up and, and, and my behalf, uh, and, uh, but, uh, we had a good meeting. Uh, we talked about, you know, moving forward with the buildings, I gave you your form so you can look over it, it's for every word what was discussed.
I was on, I was on, um, they, they, they were going to tell.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, and, uh, and something else that, uh, we wanted to discuss too with moving forward with, uh, with, uh, President Bulleye, uh, was trying to set up a meeting with the, uh, about this minimum building. There are some things, uh, concerned things that we would like to do to protect the buildings. And, uh, we want to, uh, we're asking, you know, we had a lot of theft. You know, we talked about things that were taken from all of the public, from the recreation, from Dallas Academy, from, uh, St. James, from other, we discussed about. And we came up with some, uh, recommend, recommendations, uh, uh, to protect. When we get these, uh, items put back in and air conditioning replaced, you know, we know that, uh, uh, city buildings, uh, things that didn't have cameras, we're working on that. Also, we are working on to protect them from taking them, we are planning on putting, uh, those iron rod cages on top and, um, other things. And we're also asking Mr., Mr. Pete for, to make a, a monthly report to us, you know, to let us know, keep us updated. Because the, I feel like that the, um, the citizen, the community needs to know, to know what's going on when, when, when money, uh, when they steal our, our property, when they damage our property, they need to know how much money that is costing our insurance, how much money the insurance has to pay out. So we're going to do, uh, want to do good with this committee and we want to get our city buildings back open so people can start, you know, having planning. So that's mostly what we worked on and, uh, that's my report from there.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, I mean, Councilwoman Thomas.
Jackson, I hear.
Councilwoman Thomas. Uh, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Uh, you all will see that on the last page of her committee report, um, Councilwoman Thomas gave me a couple of assignments. Uh, one of the assignments is concerning the two schools that are being closed. So I'm giving you all this so you can be thinking about it as to come. As you talk to your school board representative, I talk to my school board representative a lot, a whole lot. Because I want to make sure that we're still connected. Um, and we, she gave me the assignment to go and try to make sure that if there are major problems with these two schools, to ask the school board to fix them before handing them back over to the city of Selma. We just cannot afford to fix, let's just say, a major, roughly. Uh, if that, uh, you know, if that occurred under them, uh, we have an expectation, uh, that it would be fixed under them. So, um, just so you all know, that's, that's one of the things that I would be doing to ask if there is something major going on uh, before it's handed back over that it would be fixed. And she gave me, she gave me something else to do, um, oh, oh, um, so also, um, I talked to school board members. There has been, um, a notification that has gone out that there are poss, possible buyers for the buildings and I think that we should be a part of that process. Uh, just like when the school board came to us and, and said that they should be a part of the process when we were discussing the $400,000. We should be a part of the process if, if somebody is saying, hey, we have buyers for Cedar Park and we have buyer for, uh, Berg School. Then at the very minimum, Benjamin and Jackson should have been included, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying the whole council, uh, should know about that. So those are the two assignments that, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, uh, did give me. I did ask Councilwoman Thomas to go to the courthouse and pull the deeds, she did that. She has, she has the, uh, actual deed to three and four. Uh, we have those and we have the language that was, uh, uh, created, um, uh, from way back when, before us, before all of us.
Very, very bad, just so.
It does, it does.
Like some versionary clause.
There is a versionary clause.
All right, all right, Council. I would love for you all to attend the, uh, recreation meeting because it's going to definitely be dealing with buildings, uh, we'll be dealing with the, 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 uh, stadium, also things that we need to do, um, concerning schools and all. But I'd definitely need your committee there at my recreation department meeting and I get it started, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Thomas.
It was long, long tip of, oh, I would like to ask, uh, President Bulleye and when my recommendation that I put to the floor that, uh, I said about the cages, uh, protecting the buildings and stuff, do we have to do, uh, uh, do we have to do a vote of resolution or, or that these buildings be protected? That we, all of our units with the air conditions need to have the, the iron rods?
You can, you can turn the motion on the floor, I'll see.
Do you think it would, but I'm.
I was making a call a minute ago, you have to, you have to look at the cost, cost analysis and all that?
Yes, we're in the process of doing that, you know, but I'm just saying right now with the, with the buildings that we're trying to, uh, secure. You know, with the insurance, uh, we claim that we have on the buildings, we're waiting for the repair and they're going to put these, you know, replace these units back in. And we want to protect them before, once they place them back in, we need to have these, uh, iron raid, you know, cages on this. We need to do this, immediately once they get through it.
Okay, what you may want to do is put a motion on the floor for a major plan, which includes, uh, the pages and then to move forward.
Pinned in the courts.
Pinned in the courts.
Pinned in the courts.
Hey, Councilwoman, don't forget your number five, um, from the meeting, I'm, I'm reminding you, just for reminder's sake, that you had those four recommendations on, on your last page.
Yes.
Uh, number, uh, Roman number five is your, uh, recommendation.
And that's what I wanted to put the recommendation to the council, you know, about, you had one, I, I gave you one too.
It's from yesterday, he probably took them all, I probably.
I'm in the box, down at the box. Right there. That's contrast concerning, um, uh, the mayor's recommendation moving the staff in for, um, um, buildings so that we can rent buildings.
Gates.
The gates, the cameras on public buildings, and Mr. Pete to make money.
Okay, you can just make this part of the recommendation, just put it in the form of a motion.
So I think, do I have to do it tonight, will I have to do it tonight to put your recommendation?
You can, you can make a motion, that's part of your, that's something out of your, uh, committee. Uh, any recommendations that you would like to make, uh, kind of from the committee, so you can bring it to the floor, uh, for us to vote on.
Okay, I wanted to put a recommendation to the floor to vote on that the contract that we, uh, discussed about, uh, the buildings being reopened and, uh, it was some language in there that we needed to, to change. And I think I have the contract here.
I think Attorney Jones, is that's the contract that he's working on?
Is he going, it, I think so.
If it was passed to him, it was supposed to be passed, the president would have passed.
Did you pass the contract to him?
To pass to.
You had one of the contracts.
Yeah, he's working on, on the contract and also he's working on that M O B that you had, you guys forgot. He's working on both of them.
Having the officers there writing, um, for the buildings.
Yes.
And then pulling out where our workers won't have to be there, so pulling it out. And then pulling out where our workers won't have to be there, so pulling it out.
The recommendation, um, so for them to say, we have, we have two women, um, seven, eight and tier, um, that are working all events. We also have a problem that we are not taking events because of that matter. And we are not getting money for the buildings that are set, set up. We have a lot of people wanting to be included, a young lady now that's in the, in the building tonight who wants to have a wedding. Um, she's here tonight in present. And so, um, it was offered by the mayor to, uh, remove from the contracting language. Uh, remove the fact that there has to be either, uh, somebody for public buildings.
Right.
Uh, at these meetings.
Correct.
And so, uh, so if we remove that, we can open the booths back up, we can take, uh, dates from citizens, we can schedule and we can take in those money. If we remove that, that piece that requires that there has to be someone on staff. Now, this didn't happen at the meeting, but I would like to offer this, offer the Smithman building because a young lady that wants to have a little wedding, wants to have it over there. And we took her over there so she could see the building. And as we looked around the building, we were like, hey, it's a lot of stuff in here, it's almost a museum. Uh, it's.
A museum.
It's a museum. Uh, you know, I'm used to seeing big museums, bigger museums, but yeah, it is a museum, you're right. Um, but I'm looking at all the stuff in there and I'm saying, you know, this particular building might need to be the exception. Uh, you know, every, everything else is just an open, empty building. Smithson, you know, we have, we have three floors and on, on the second and third floor, there's a lot of stuff that people, uh, obtain. Um, and so, somebody has to be responsible for it, is what I'm saying. So that building might need to be the exception.
Also with that contract, uh,
Yes.
He would be giving the, I mean, Attorney Jones would be giving the contract for our next meeting. For a minute, I was looking at it, Councilwoman Thomas, I did talk with Attorney Jones today. He's working on that contract from the recommendation and also that, uh, MOU for that building in your, he said it happened next meeting. But if you want to move forward with these recommendations.
Well, we might want to move forward with it because we have people, we have people in line and, and they, uh, want to lease the buildings. They want to have events. And the cities, we're here to make money, we not want to have people to go away and go somewhere else with the money when they come to the city. And they're telling us that they don't have the, the employees there. So we want to, uh, work the best way with our citizens to keep them bringing the money to the city.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
A contract, a contract.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I have some serious concern about what I heard my colleague say about the possibility of selling of the, uh, 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 school.
The two schools?
Other two schools. When there's, there's a versionary clause, those schools belong to the city itself. Once they cease and desist from being an educa- education institution. I think somebody would be letting the school board know that they can't do this.
Right.
I'm not saying that that is true, but it's your.
Right, nah, I'm not either.
But if there's any facts to what you said, that there's an attempt to sell the building, somebody's gonna be in some deep.
Yeah, it's true.
And they gonna be the city. So let's head it on while we're kicking.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other, any other comments?
Aye.
Alright, Councilwoman Benjamin.
You got it.
Over to.
I was gonna say, I agree with Mr. Shaw, if we can get the attorney to bring the language regarding the contracts and stuff like that, I would feel better. Not, I support it a hundred percent, I just feel better about the understanding and, uh, and then of course the costs associated with those cages so they can't be rebuilt. So when those air conditioners arrive back, we can get those things on top immediately. So I'm all for that, most of it is a treasure as our main buildings in our community and I'd like to see that be protected so it can be enjoyed for generations to come.
Yeah, and I can tell you before I did talk to Attorney Jones today, he had information back for me. I did acquire about four of Councilwoman Thomas. Let's take it to the committee, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Okay, um, no report for that committee, but I will be looking up some information for you all concerning, uh, professional development and concerning, and, and maybe I'm closing in and I may be out of order here, but also concerning our relationship with, uh, Selma City Public Schools. I don't know if you meant that, not that committee, concerning education and, and in partnership with that, but I would like to. Okay, I would like to continue, uh, the partnership with them and, uh, set up a meeting between the entities. Are we closing?
Uh, hold on, we remember two items from the, from the, uh, the Selma meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, I, um, Ms. Ivy came up and spoke with me. And what she's gonna do, she's gonna do for me is she's going to invite, um, the owner to the next meeting, either work session or a council meeting, whichever one they could make. And I'd like to go ahead and vote it up for, um, um, first reading. So that gives you all time to go out, please go out to look, if you have time, go out to look, uh, at the area, uh, and, and make sure you look at the inspections. We have two different, uh, we have two different applications, okay, for the same address. And Ms. Ivy has said, you know, usually that goes to attorney, when, when attorney now is here, you put, you, you give it to him and he will come with all the answers. And so we gotta go back now and give it to our new, our new attorney and so he can come back with all the answers. And so putting it on first read, both of them will give us two weeks, uh, to go out, look at the building, uh, see why they may be asking for these two different things, uh, at this same location and come back and make a vote, uh, yay or nay.
Long story. No, it's the county, county's calling.
For, for lounge, for lounge to my ward and an ABC looking license.
Okay, yeah. Councilwoman Thomas, the council minister.
Uh, President Bowie, uh, are you gonna take the language back? Cause I, I like, um, with the contract that we was talking about with moving forward with the buildings. What are you gonna take the contract to have the language changed in? Because, uh, I want, I don't, I, the young lady is out in the, in the audience and I wanted to know if, uh, what.
Okay, uh, I was, I mean, I was still working on the contract, I can shit you. The attorney still working on the contract. So he said he would have it to us, um, prior to the next meeting. And so as he get it, I make sure, uh, you got a copy of this. Hold on, Councilwoman Shaw.
Um, Mr. President, do we still have a policy when the looker license apply for the sign is put in there?
Yes, sir.
Who, who put the sign out for this application, Mrs. Davis, you know?
I know that it's not going to be, it's gonna play some first read, so, uh, that will be my next question. Who's going to take it to?
I, I can take it, okay. Is it available in your office?
No, I'll have to check with, uh, the former city attorney's office.
Okay, just let me know where to get it from.
Okay.
I don't mind driving it out there.
Councilor.
I think we need to have a consistent way of doing this.
Yes, we do.
Cause then I know the attorney, once we had one on staff, he had that responsibility. And since we have this as a policy, then we need to have some consistency as to what we doing. And I, and I'm a fact, my colleague, of course, is in a ward, that's why she should recently, uh, agreed to do this, but.
We'll get the Attorney Jones.
Yeah, and he can.
We'll get it. So we have a motion on the floor for first read?
Yes, sir, for, uh, can we do, um, both at the same time?
My sir.
Okay, that motion, Councilwoman Benjamin, the second, Councilman Shaw, roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Golis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood? Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes. Alright, motion passed for first read.
Um, is there any way possible that, uh, one of my, uh, Ms. Durry, my, she lives in my ward, can she go ahead on and just lease book that date? Uh, for nobody else to get that date for her, uh, so that way, uh, she.
She gets it.
Right, she gonna lock it on end, uh, Ms. Ms. Durry, uh, so, right, that's great. Okay, that's why I want to make sure she got a lock of date. Cause we don't want nobody else to get it that day, cause that's a very important date for her.
Is it? That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Miss, she don't mind staying in the ward?
She's the one that comes, she came to the meeting, she's the one that did the meeting.
Right, she lives in the ward, eh?
Yeah.
Alright, not on the closer, go ahead.
So, so you. You know, to take this, uh, jury date. You know, the, the procedure is you put a date, you want to secure it, you put down a deposit. And she gonna be required to put a deposit down because she is not. And somebody come in there with a deposit, then that date has been lost by her. So are we gonna make an exception that she would not be required to put this deposit down? And that, and that's why I have no problem with that.
I don't think so. No, I don't think she have a problem with, uh.
Uh, I don't think she have a problem. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas?
She, she said she did, we, we had talked with her. As soon as we gave the okay for Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis has to have, Ms. Davis not gonna let nobody get that book, on that book, but did she get the okay from the daily day operation that it can be opened up because Mrs., what's your name?
Ms. Durry.
Ms. Durry and someone else was here present that day trying to get a building too. So that's why we were saying, people came to the, the meeting that wanted to starve that, trying to get the building. What we do, we want to be fair to all of them because they came to the meeting.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that once she got that date, that somebody came, laid on her, somebody that's got, I just want that date secured for her, that's all.
That's it, that's it. Alright, not on the closer remarks, uh, start with Councilman John.
My, Mr. President, uh, I, I just want to say, uh, glad it was a wonderful meeting. Um, God, I wish it would be like this all the time, just we get out early, uh, work session were great. Um, you know, I think we getting a lot accomplished by working together. Um, I'm so excited about some work getting done on Ward Eight, um, so excited that the ministers want to come in and, and do a talk on Ward Eight, uh, off of Division Street. Um, the compress is slowly coming down, something I've been trying to get, uh, down for the last, uh, five years since I've been in office. Um, I, I just, you know, just so much I just, I'm thankful. But anyway, I just want to say that, uh, we also working on a project, uh, for the GWC homes, uh, we in the process working on. I was, I was also excited to see that, uh, on, on this display that the mayor put on yesterday in the work session with all the cameras that we got out sitting out, um, that's watching all the streets and stuff. Some areas could not show us, um, it's just a lot, um, happened out, uh, the sense of progress is being done here in the state of Selma. And I'm just hoping to stay, stay on this path and keep moving, uh, smoothly moving. Uh, Mr. President, I also want to thank you for, uh, sending on the, uh, agenda for us, uh, it's going well. And I just want to say, uh, thanks for everything that going on in Ward Eight, all the citizens that trying to work to make Ward Eight bigger, better place. And I want to say goodnight to the city of Selma.
Thank you, Councilman John, thank you for your work. Councilwoman Benjamin. Alright, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Um, I, I'd like to, um, it is, um, six twenty-four. So I'd like to remind you all that there's game at Selma High School at seven o'clock PM, uh, basketball game. They are on the road, uh, to the final four. Uh, it's gonna be very electric in this city if they do make it to the final four. It's been many years, uh, since Selma High hasn't been able to go to, uh, Birmingham. The girls won on last night Tuscaloosa, the boys play Tuscaloosa tonight. The girls are on their way to Montgomery, uh, this week. And hopefully the boys win tonight and they're on their way to Montgomery. And then, uh, is, uh, is vying for, for Birmingham, uh, after that, after the, uh, central regions. So if you all have a chance to go over there, just, uh, go over there and, uh, add to the electricity that's in the jam. I also want to remind you of my announcements for the 17th Annual Black History Celebration, February twenty-sixth, at five thirty PM at the Performing Arts Center. And the Tenth Annual Black Man Hill Symposium, uh, nine fifteen AM to two fifteen PM at the Performing Arts Center, uh, the next day. Uh, I might just say that date wrong, so it's twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, um, those two events, um, the same way that I just announced them. And, uh, our quarterly meeting for Ward Four is February twentieth, that's next, uh, week. Um, Adam is gonna make sure that it's in the paper, yes, thank goodness for Adam. Uh, he's gonna make sure that's in the paper for us and it's gonna be at five o'clock PM, uh, announce the location. Hopefully I can get that by morning time, uh, to Adam. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilman Shaw.
Our city has many problems, ladies and gentlemen. Problems that we as councilmen has been charged to fix them. But we need resources to get that done. It is easy to talk, it is easy to talk about a problem. What bring about a real challenge is resolve to address it and move beyond talking and get these problems solved. The infrastructure of our city, Selma's one of the oldest city in Alabama. The potholes has taken over our city, just like, it's just like a disease that's continuing to flourish without an antibiotic. And this council is charged with fixing this problem, y'all, and we gotta get it done. There gonna be some that's wanna not want to go down that road, but yet still the problem still exists. We gotta have the courage to do what is right, regardless of people's opinion. And people have that right to have their opinion. That is the mayor's way of life, this is the democracy that is afforded to us as Americans. But the truth of the matter is our problems are not gonna be fixed unless we fix them. And I pray that once we have this public hearing, that those that come bored up against it, they come with a resolution. Something that's reasonable, something that's, that's, that can be done. But all in all, it's a problem, we gotta deal with it. Our city is still continuing to have crime. My brother-in-law was robbed and gunned for it last Sunday, walking out of his door. Said, it is true, it was in my ward, but it's just not gonna get it to war, it's everywhere. Thank God the police department has apprehended three of the culprits. One, one to my knowledge has turned himself in. And guess what? They're not even forty-one years of age. These are babies, don't guns. But they're committing these crimes and once they commit a crime, they gonna have the, suffer the consequences. So to all of you guys out there, you need to be safe, know your surroundings, be aware of your surroundings because these two guys are just walking up the street as they customary to do. My brother-in-law didn't think nothing about it, next thing you know, they up in his sign with a nine millimeter with an extended clip. Took his car, took his wallet, thank God they didn't take his life. All in all, these are problems in our city, they ain't going away. As a matter of fact, they gonna, they gonna increase unless we do something about it. I'm thankful for our police department, the men that risked their lives, that taken the oath of protection serve. And the least that we can do is to afford them the equipment that they need. Saying, but it's true, we don't have money to give them all that they need. So it's gonna take the money from we the people. Government exists, buy the people, other people, and for them. Taxation is given to government for one thing, and that is for quality services. If you want quality service, ladies and gentlemen, you have to pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Shaw, Councilwoman Thomas.
Also, I want to, I'm, I'm a pusher when it comes to public safety. Now, we all know, we are leaders in each ward, we all ward, all, every council sitting up here knows what's going on in their ward. They know what a problem, they know we have gunshot. Also, I want to push this because I want the people to come out to the public safety meeting. You hear people growling, you hear people fuss. You know where we live, you know what we hear. Anytime you hear forty, fifty, sixty rounds, when it's, when your leaders bring someone, you want answers. You got mothers still grieving. You got mothers still upset, they saying they're not hearing anything. You got, you got people that got gunned down on the, broad on daylight, on the, on the streets in the neighborhood. You can't go and serve God, why if you serving God in the house, some, a man comes up and shoots someone in the morning, wish you, you in church. This is kind of stuff that we having. And people are voicing, they tired. So this public safety meeting should be packed. You got eight wards. And if you got a problem in your ward, you know, you hear these gun shots constantly, people getting shot. You got to jump out the bed and hit the floor. This is the time that you need to come out of the droves. Because if we, if, if, if we bring someone here and need to talk to us about what's going on, people want answers. In my ward, I have a military young lady, was here during Christmas, in the army. The family is upset because their daughter got shot in the back driving through the neighborhood. And the family is upset because no one, no one came, no one. And the family is upset because no one, no one came, no one come, no one even came yet to say uh, I'm sorry, uh, how your daughter doing? Last week, they were supposed to remove the bullet from her back. She lives right around the corner from me. And the mother called me and she said, Councilwoman Thomas, she said, I know you fight hard for us. She said, I know you do. She said, but it take us. She said, we got to get some answers. She said, my baby is in the army military, came home for the holidays and driving between going down the street and somebody having a shootout and her child got the bullet. And she said that, no. She said she has been to the police department, she has been for answers. Nobody showed no concern about her child. So I told her, I said, we have a public safety meeting. You come, you bring your, her daughter's still here with the bullet in her back. She can't go back to the army right now. So I said, we have a public safety meeting. So I said, all your loved ones that got gunned down in the street, this is time for you to come. This is time for everybody, everybody that got people in their ward. We got some people that got gunned down. Nobody, if you love your family like you say and you tired of gun violence, this public safety meeting should be packed, because that's all we got in city of Selma now. Gunfight, gunshot. You sleep three or four o'clock in the morning, you wake up crazy. You gotta fall out, out, out the bed on the floor. You scared. So, you know, it's it's time for us to to come to this meeting. We don't have these committee meetings just to help. You concerned about public safety, if you bring somebody here to address to the people what you're planning on doing before some more bodies get killed. People need to come out. We know who, we know the wards, we know our wards that we got problem. So we expect the people to come out tomorrow night to the uh, to the, to the public safety meeting to hear what our visitors have to say to us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Uh, next council meeting will be Tuesday, February twenty-sixth at five o'clock in this council chamber. At this time, the children will take a motion.
Now, Mr. President, if you call, the U.S. Attorney Eric Dick, when he met with us about we to see, and he asked each of, every one of us to uh uh give to him the name of a person out of our ward that served on a badge committee, I want to I want to encourage all council people to have that information for him tomorrow, because he's moving forward on his weed and seed. And this weed and seed is a resource that is badly needed in our city. So be a part of that adventure.
I'll text mine to you already.